October 6, 2025 briefing, the Forsyth County Commissioners. We're actually, this is a briefing for the meeting on Thursday, October the 9th. And we're going to review the agenda items and I'll call on the county manager in a moment. And afterwards, we're going to have two discussion items. We're going to talk some about the proposed Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools External Audit Committee, and we have a copy of that, of their proposed policy. And we'll talk a little bit about the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools county, the debt obligation they have to the county at the moment. So with no further ado, I'll turn the meeting over to our county manager, Shontelle Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. Agenda item number one is a public hearing to consider the submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division to apply for an accepted award or rural building reuse grant to support the location of Project Flower in Forsyth County in an associated resolution authorizing submission of the application. Elena Fiori from our Community Economic Development Department will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good to be with you here today. This agenda item is for consideration of economic development support to aid Project Flower's establishment at a facility in Forsyth County. Today, I'll provide details around the project, the company investment, and the building reuse grant. Project Flower represents a company specializing in botanical production and manufacturing to create wellness and cosmetic products. The company is active in the local entrepreneurial ecosystem, participating in both Winston Starts and the Center for Creative Economy Programs. The company is looking to establish a headquarters and manufacturing facility in Forsyth County. This manufacturing facility would be a capital investment of about $3 million to purchase and renovate a facility. The new facility would include office space for company headquarters and manufacturing rooms for production. We estimate that this investment will bring about $120,000 in new tax revenue over the course of 10 years. Investments in this facility will bring about 41 new jobs to the community. These jobs will range every, range from executive leadership positions down through entry-level manufacturing roles. This will bring the average annual wage to be about $79,000 per year for the jobs hired. And finally, the company is in consideration for a North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant. The state requires a unit of local government to apply for and administer that grant. If a resolution passes, Forsyth County will apply for a December grant award, and if awarded, the funding would be passed from the state to the county and then the company in support of Project Flower. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions for Sean?
Just a question about process. After the most recent approval that we made, which I was enthusiastically in favor of, the point was raised that by not revealing the identity of the company at issue in an incentives or similar case at the briefing meeting, we cut off meaningful public participation in the public hearing because the main thing that you would think of that folks, in addition to vetting the economics of the proposal, which are available, the main thing that the interested public might wish to comment on is the company's record elsewhere. And so they really don't have an opportunity to look that up and come to comment. We don't get a lot of comments. And usually, if something gets this far, you've gotten a positive internal reaction from the body you're presenting to. Is there any reason why we can't go back to the process of talking about, all right, this is who the applicant is at the briefing in advance of the hearing just a few days later?
Um.
I'm happy to jump in here.
Yeah. I have a comment after, yeah, but I'll let you answer.
That is the board's discretion. I think a couple of years ago, Greg Wensell came to us and said that a lot of our peers were doing it this way. Companies prefer to be confidential as long as they can, but certainly, the board is able to disclose the name whenever they'd like to.
Okay. All right.
I think this project's a little different because it's for support of a state grant. Usually, when we come before the board with an economic development project, it's for a company that is not sure yet of their final decision. And our incentives certainly help recruit them here, but we're competing against other cities and localities for them to move. I think for those types of projects, we don't ever want to announce before a company makes known to their employees and shareholders about their move. So that's just a comment on why the confidentiality is in place. But like Kyle said, we could change that per the board's discretion.
And for the early parts of the process, it makes perfect sense. Usually, if it gets this far, my sense of the history of this kind of incentive is that if you're bringing it forward for us to approve it, we already have a signal that if they get this, they decided this would be their preferred community. And I'm trying to balance the practicalities of recruitment versus, with the practicalities of meaningful public input. We have a hearing obligation, so presumably, the law charges us with providing that meaningful opportunity. And it's, at this point, it's really not there anymore. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I would think that, I agree with you in principle. I think that we should put something in sort of our own sort of agreed to a policy of that effect, and people be noticed. In other words, if you're Project Flower, and you would need to know that your name was going to be identified at the briefing.
At certain point, yeah.
And that that would be the plan as a part of our approval process. And I think until we, I think we should, as far as this one goes, I think we don't do anything today, and this is an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce issue. This is not a local incentive plan. So it's a little different, also a little different in that regard. But I think that we could discuss that at a subsequent, you know, meeting with a proposal. We could have an actual proposal. We're going to do this. We'll notice the company, and then that would be the way of doing business. But I do agree from But I do agree from a hearing standpoint, I think the comments that we received, I think they're on target. If you don't know who it is, you can't comment much.
And I certainly appreciate the thought that the company should have noticed before we make changes, and that it would be reasonable to handle this one into the current process, but discuss the options for the other later.
Other comments? I saw a gray one.
Yes, I want to know about the product line. Are these vanity cosmetic products solely for women, or do they have a broader portfolio for medicinal, nutraceutical, or pharmaceutical products?
Well, the products that they make are all for, they're white labeled to businesses. So they make creams, lotions, body butters that gets white labeled and sold to other businesses for those folks to brand and put their names on. I can't speak currently to what they're doing in terms of pharmaceuticals, but it's all wellness and cosmetic at the time, right now.
Well, one person's wellness is another one's poison.
Yeah.
Well, I think it is, just to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is clearly creams issues, kind of the applications of that sense versus, I guess, is a cream a pharmaceutical, I guess? Can it be?
Yes, it depends on the cream and what's in it. It could be toxic.
So I know that the products are all FDA certified. They follow manufacturing practices that fall within FDA guidelines, and I know that their products are cosmetic and topical in nature. I can't speak to the strength or, you know, like, is this like a bio freeze or something like that? I can't speak to that, but I can find that out.
I think you answered my question there. FDA-approved percent, 21 CFR. Okay?
Yeah. The NACs manufacturing code for these products is biomedical manufacturing.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda items two through four are special resolutions. Two is a resolution commending Forsyth Tech on the occasion of its 65th anniversary. Three is a resolution recognizing October as Workforce Development Month, and four is the resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in recognizing the efforts of Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center. And we will have representatives from all of those agencies here with us on Thursday. Agenda item number five is approval of minutes for the meeting of September 25th. Madam Clerk, was that emailed out?
Yes, I have no doubt. One's a third.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate funds from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. Sharita Sutton, the Assistant Public Health Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon. We are requesting board approval to appropriate $16,000 from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina in a sponsorship agreement. This funding will support the department's Improving Community Outcomes for Maternal and Child Health, known as ICO for MCH. This is the partnership we'll give for County Department of Public Health. The program to conduct two sessions of the Respectful Maternity Care Simulator. This is an interactive, evidence-based simulation that participants, including healthcare providers, nurses, social workers, doulas, and community members, in real life, excuse me, real-life maternity care encounters. Its goal is to increase awareness of respectful versus disrespectful care, promote patient advocacy, and encourage systemic change to reduce maternal and infant mortality in our community. Approval of this appropriation will allow Forsyth County to continue advancing maternal and child health equity while strengthening partner and community engagement. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the County Capital Projects Fund to appropriate interest earnings from State Capital Infrastructure Fund awards for Tanglewood Clubhouse and Agricultural Park projects. Kyle Wolf, our Budget Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you know, the county has received funding for various projects from the state of North Carolina over the past several years. Two of those projects are the Tanglewood Clubhouse and the Agricultural Park Complex. And over the past couple of years, interest earnings have accrued, which could be appropriated to offset the amount of county funds that were used for each project. And so this item would appropriate $155,289.45 so that we can report it to the state as being used, and then we would transfer that same amount to a budget reserve for future appropriation in the County Capital Projects Fund. So really, what we're trying to do is maximize other funds and save the county dollars. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate a North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources grant for the America 250 Project. Casey Balzer from our Budget Office will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair. On April 18th, 2024, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners approved the submission of an application to the NC Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for an America 250 North Carolina County Committee grant. This grant is funded through SL 2023-134 and will be used in the statewide effort to commemorate America's 250th anniversary. The goal of the America 250 Project is to energize robust, comprehensive, and inclusive programs across North Carolina. These one-time state funds in the amount of $10,000 will be used to plan and organize events, projects, and initiatives in Forsyth County. At the April 4th, 2024 meeting, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution that recognized the Forsyth County America 250 Committee as a local partner on this project, and authorized Forsyth County to manage the committee's finances. This item is necessary to appropriate the grant funds in the amount of $10,000. The committee is currently active under the leadership of Muse Winston-Salem and is working to build a website that will promote all of the events put on by various municipalities and community organizations within the county. We can take any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
And Mike Wakeford is here from Muse. He's chairing this committee if you have any questions about what's happening with America 250.
Well, since he's here, I'd like to hear.
Well, good.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Thanks for the intro. So I can just give you a quick update today about the work of our committee. Again, my name is Mike Wakeford, and I'm here today in my role as Chair of the Forsyth County America 250 NC Committee. As you'll recall, you did call this committee, my committee, into being by resolution in 2024. The committee is composed of a couple dozen representatives from across the county, representing historically-minded organizations and institutions, as well as representatives from the counties' various municipalities. By creating this committee, you enabled us to successfully apply and receive that aforementioned $10,000 grant from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. And at that time, we proposed to develop a website for the committee to be used as an information hub, to house an exhibit to be developed related to the themes around the 250th that the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources established, and to provide ultimately, for posterity's sake, an archive of the way that organizations and institutions in our county choose to commemorate the 250th. Just to give you a little more information, when I refer to the themes set forth by the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, and I read from their language, they have asked that all commemorative activities, whether through a county committee or through individual organizations, project grants, that the commemoration focus on two broad concepts with complementary thematic avenues to explore the following concepts: Revolutionary North Carolina, or the historical events of the Revolution and North Carolina, and When Are We Us?, an exploration of the ideas of freedom, civic responsibility, overcoming challenges, and change as we lean into the ideals of democracy. As we sit here today, we are actually getting very close to securing our web vendor to actually set up and launch our website. Our plan is to have that website launched no later than January 1st, 2026, which will mean it's in place and ready to both highlight some work that's already been done over the past year, but mostly showcase the work of individual organizations and institutions related to the anniversary going on around the county. I can, on that note, while I can't speak for, I shouldn't speak for other organizations that have applied successfully for project grants, I can tell you that already, and this is what I know about Old Salem Museum and Gardens, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and the Reynolda Museum of American Art have all successfully applied for project grants from the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. Some of the work done under those project grants has already, at least partially unfolded, and some is to come. And I know just informally that several other organizations locally, and I suspect a large handful, are, have plans underway. So as the semi-quintcentennial celebration really ramps up into, I think, what will become the heart of the commemorative period, starting in 2026 and going through July 4th, 2026, I suspect that, and expect that there'll be a lot of really interesting activities going on in all corners of the county, and we take it as our committee's responsibility to make sure that all of those are properly highlighted and celebrated for that important work as part of the overall celebration. So that's my update. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mike?
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine is Casey's as well. It's an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate countywide overlay fire tax fund balance to facilitate training opportunities for the county fire system.
Good afternoon again. The Forsyth County Fire Department has identified two structures that have been offered to them for burn training. Before that can happen, asbestos training and probable abatement must be completed for the safety of all training attendants. The estimated cost of testing and abatement is $15,000. Funds generated from the sales taxes in fire tax districts and property taxes within the countywide overlay service district have accumulated to allow for this purchase. This agenda item appropriates these funds from fund balance.
Questions? Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is Casey's as well. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Mobile Communications America, Inc. for the purchase of communications equipment to support the county fire system and an associated amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate countywide overlay fire tax fund balance from Mobile Communications America to support the county fire system.
This is the last one, and then I'll leave you all alone. Forsyth County has determined a need for 244 pagers to provide enhanced communications to first responders in the county fire system. Interagency communications have submitted a request or proposals and solicited formal bids for the pagers, which includes the 244 pagers and chargers, with all bids received coming in equal at $220,178.28. It is a recommendation of the IAC Radio Systems Manager that Forsyth County enter into an agreement with Mobile Communications America, Inc. to purchase the equipment. Funds generated, again, has accumulated to allow for the purchase for this equipment, and this agenda item appropriates these funds from fund balance. I can take any questions, hopefully.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with I3 Verticals LLC for website and operating system administration and maintenance. Kyle Wolf, our Budget Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. So the Register of Deeds has contracted with I3 Verticals LLC for website and operating system administration and maintenance in order to provide general public with online access to public documents. The cost of the service is $65,310. Register of Deeds Lynn Johnson is available if you have specific questions about the service of the vendor. That's about what I know.
I do have one question, and it really has to do with, typically, these kinds of things run for three-year periods. This is a single, this is only for one year, is what the materials say. I'm just kind of curious if sometimes bidding for, or a quote or estimate for three years might get a little discount over the time, or at least you lock in prices for the next two years to avoid huge escalations, or you're at least aware of what's happening. And the way I read this is that we currently use that now.
We do. They are the current provider, believe it's a sole source kind of thing. So we can certainly look into that. And I can ask Sheriff Lynn, do you know anything about a multi-year agreement that we might be able to do? Is there any opportunities to do like a more than one-year agreement with the vendor?
Well, hello, everyone. The issue came up because for the past years, we've had single-year contracts. This year, with an increase, small increase in the cost of the contract, and we've been with I3 Verticals for over 20 years. So this is actually a very low operating cost. When we went through contract control, that was a lined item that the attorney's office looked at for us to review, with it stating or interpreting that the four-year contract won services would be at the amount of $65,000. We can't guarantee that there won't be an increase in it. So that's why we were favoring a one-year contract, because it is our core operating system, so we don't really send that out for bid.
Well, I understand it's a single-source vendor, and not really talking about bidding, I'm just talking about having a multi-year agreement. So not only do we not do this every year, the second part is it locks them in to what their rates would be for, say, three years, for example. It just seems to me it might be more efficient, and at least, because I suspect over the 20 years that you've been using this vendor, that you've had a number of price increases.
No, actually haven't.
No price increase? It was $65,000 20 years ago?
It was actually $62.2, and it went up to $65,310 just past fiscal year.
That's interesting.
I guess we're grandfathered in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to weigh in on this. It came through as a multi-year contract, but only the first year had a guaranteed price. And so my recommendation was get prices for years two, three, four, and the vendor was not willing to give prices beyond the first year, so that's why it's just for one year.
That's interesting.
Could I weigh in if you don't mind? Lynn, with that being known, what are your thoughts if they come back with a price increase for the foregoing years?
Well, the price increase that we have from the $62.2 to the $65.310 took effect for FY '26.
Right.
I don't anticipate, I don't know, when the next increase will come about, but that's the only increase we've had.
Are you feeling comfortable that it'll stay around this range?
I can't guarantee that. I would have to get with the folks at I3 Verticals.
I'm just trying to get in your mind with regards to, do you think that it'll be a 10%, 20% increase? What could that look like in the coming years?
I'm thinking that.
Lynn, do you want to talk about why this vendor's been used for 20 years, kind of, or other counties using this system, maybe just a little bit more perspective of the system itself and what it does for the Register of Deeds?
It is our core operating system where we do all of our searches and issuance of records. There are Guilford County, Davidson County, some counties further east, North Carolina, they're based out of Tennessee, that use I3 verticals. We've never had any major issues with them. They're 24/7 service. We can get them at any time, even after 5:00 if we need to, but we haven't had any issues with them. They've been pretty reliable for what the Register of Deeds Office needs and does.
But it is a single-source vendor? Sorry.
Question from Mr. Attorney. How many years did you say that they would, only one year or more guarantee that price?
Yeah, I wasn't dealing with them directly, but what I was told is they would only guarantee a single year. Like, they don't know what their price will be a year from now.
It seems like to me, if I was doing a contract like that, then I don't know whether I'd want a contract beyond that or not, unless I knew what the price was.
Well, that's what the proposal is, just a one-year contract.
One year?
Yes.
Well, I trust you, Lynn, so I believe that you're the subject matter expert, and you'll come back to us if there's a problem, right?
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, you've kind of opened up, your comments opened up somewhat of a question of, are there, they obviously are not used by all counties. So there must be someone else that does this same kind of work.
There are several other vendors, Courthouse Systems, Tyler Systems, Aminton. I'm most familiar with the ones that use I3 verticals, the same system that the Register of Deeds Forsyth County uses.
So this is really not a sole-source vendor?
It is for the Register of Deeds Office, for our operating system.
So the question, I think, Lynn, would be, when's the last time you bid? So the question, I think, Lynn, would be, when's the last time you bid out this service? And can it be bid to hypothetically, what if another vendor is $50,000? Can we transition our system potentially to someone else if we bid it out?
No, we would have to go solely with the other vendor.
I think-
I mean, if you were to bid out, say, Tyler Technologies, I mean, I don't know what their cost is for a new operating system. I've never had any reason to delve into that. So it's an option.
We'll work a little bit on it offline.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution awarding a contract and authorizing the execution of an agreement for the purchase of uninterruptible power supply, maintenance services, and replacement batteries for the Sheriff's Office 911 Communication Center, radio equipment, and information technology server room. Stephen Yads from our Sheriff's Office will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. This agenda item is just requesting that we enter into a contract to replace 144 of our batteries that are used for our uninterrupted power supply. These batteries are essential in case we lose power so we can maintain our communications and our technology to continue operations. If you do have any specific questions about that technology, I do have our IT manager, Mike Wright, with us.
I want to commend you that you took a sole-source provider, you actually did bid it, and another company is actually less than the actual provider, I mean, than the manufacturer, the way I read it. Because it looks like National Power is actually about $1,500 less than the company that actually makes the batteries.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And the power supply itself.
And the power supply, yeah, exactly. So I want to commend you for reaching out and seeking other potential, you know, pricing for your sole-source vendor. That's, I mean, that's very good. So I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the use of a fuel credit card program for the purchase of gasoline, diesel, and other designated motive fuels at stations with extensive accessibility. Chelsea Swaim, our Deputy General Services Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board. This item is to authorize the use of a credit card program for fueling of county-owned vehicles. The county has been using WEX, Inc. since about 2019. If you recall, back in June, you all approved an extension under the state contract through September 7th. That has now expired. There is not a new state contract that has been finalized yet. So therefore, we are asking for approval to continue using WEX so as to maintain accessibility and not, and to avoid interruptions for our fueling. We are asking that you all approve an item to continue using this program under the Sourcewell Contract, which would begin September 8th and run through June 27th of 2029. We would continue to get the volume rebate as well as the timing rebate based on when WEX receives payments from us. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I don't know any questions about this, however, I know that County Manager Robinson was working on the control policy.
Yes, we are digging in deep on specifically our take-home vehicle policy. Actually had extensive conversations with our department leadership at our meeting this past Friday. And so all were told that they need to provide justification for every single employee that has a take-home vehicle. We'll be rolling out a policy, a more specific policy soon on that, once we analyze what that looks like. Because in looking at some of the data, some of the fuel is being purchased by individuals who take home vehicles outside the county. So we have a lot of work to do, but we are digging in really deep on that.
Thank you, County Manager Robinson.
Agenda item number 14 is for Chelsea as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation for elevator and escalator maintenance services.
At the June 19th meeting, you all approved to award a contract to Schindler Elevator Corporation for elevator and escalator maintenance services at different facilities. That contract includes both preventative maintenance as well as as-needed on-call repairs, as well as the testing that Department of Labor requires. Since that contract was awarded and executed, the airport has requested that we add three of their elevators to the contract. That would be two elevators at 4,001 North Liberty and the new elevator at the terminal. The two elevators at 4,001 North Liberty would, if approved, would go onto the contract effective this month. Then the elevator at the terminal would go onto the contract effective next fiscal year because it's currently under warranty. For FY '26, the total not-to-exceed amount of the contract would be $133,906. FY '27, it would be $145,160. And then FY '28, it would be $150,942, with a total not-to-exceed of $430,008. That's a little over $33,000 increase from the current not-to-exceed, and that is for the full three-year term. And this is really just coming out of the airport having some service and reliability issues with their current vendor. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mark Davidson is also here if you have anything specific for him and their experience.
Questions for Chelsea?
Thank you.
Agenda item number 15 is Chelsea's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a landlord's release agreement for county-owned real property located at 5755 Shattillon Drive in favor of Town Bank.
This item is to authorize the execution of a landlord's release agreement. Arca is our current tenant at the Springwood facility. They're on Shattillon Drive, and they are attempting to establish a line of credit with Town Bank. And so Town Bank is asking that we sign this release agreement since part of the property there at the facility, including some fixtures and everything, are being used as collateral. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chelsea on this? Good, thank you.
Agenda item number 16, seven appointments to the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board, and that board provided recommendations, or voted on recommendations at their meeting last Wednesday, which you all will vote on Thursday. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of $4,707.84. And 18 is the August contribution-based benefit cap report. And then we have two discussion items, Mr. Chair. We have the proposed external audit committee, the policy's in front of you, and the county debt obligation from the schools.
Good. I can kick this discussion off. I don't know that everybody received this email. I don't actually remember, but I received an email from a citizen that actually talked some about the board, the school board's consideration of a external audit committee policy, which was discussed in the, it's been in the local media a couple of times. And so he actually made a couple of just general suggestions about the membership of the committees. And the way it is structured now is that it has five voting members from the community not employed by the school district that would be selected by the school board. One voting member selected or appointed by the superintendent. One voting member from the community to be appointed by the commissioners, and one non-voting member from the school system to be appointed by the superintendent, which that person would be the chief financial officer or other appropriate member of the finance department. And the school board's finance committee chair would also serve as a non-voting member on the external audit committee. They call it the audit committee, but it's been discussed as external, at least in the media, but the policy just refers to it as the audit committee. And the suggestion that was made by the citizen was that essentially, since we are the funding source, and we've had a lot of issues in the last few months, that it might make sense that we have, in fact, his suggestion was that we would have a majority of voting members from the, appointed by the county, and that the school board would have the remaining appointments, one less than whatever of the total for the school board, and that this person raised the question of whether the superintendent of schools should be appointing anybody to serve as a voting member because they are a staff member and not an elected official in that regard. And actually, just having some discussion with Commissioner Bessie literally right before we started, right before the meeting, he was indicating a concern about the committee needs to be independent. And so if it was going to be independent, who should vet the applicants? Should, in other words, whatever you do in terms of who selects the applicants, should there be a body that would maybe make recommendations that would vet them? And we were, you know, we were talking a little, it's just kind of like the Health and Human Services Committee makes recommendations of the folks that we should be considering for the Health and Human Services Committee. And we were actually just brainstorming, talking about what committee could do that. And we actually asked the authority, Siri, about if there was a, if someone that actually, an organization that supported auditors. And the answer is, yes, there is. There is a company. It's IIL, I think that's correct, International Institute, no, it's IIA, International Institute of Auditors. And guess what? There is a triad branch of that national organization that represents Winston-Salem, Greensboro, and High Point. So that would be, if we, if there were interest in that type of, we could make a recommendation to the school board that they consider some changes, one of which would be that, why don't we at least approach the IIA triad, you know, branch to see if they would be willing to vet our applicants? And then I, you know, I think from the, my response back to the citizen that sent me the email was that I thought that clearly the school board has the primary interest, but we have a strong interest, and maybe that should be equal numbers. Maybe the school board should appoint half, and we should appoint half. And then the other non-voting members probably could just stay, certainly as the school board has suggested. So they bring their finance committee chairs, non-voting member, their finance officer is a non-voting member, and that could be a possibility. So I'm doing nothing but tossing this out for a discussion to see if we would like to weigh in and send something to the school board to make some changes. And I'm not suggesting particular ones, but maybe just to open the discussion for that.
Well, first off, just thinking quickly, Mr. Bessie, Commissioner Bessie, your thought is, is to have an independent group to vet whoever the applicants are? Well, it seems to me that this board is not seem, it is, that this board is elected by the people of the county, look after most things, or many things, and one of them is to do the best we can at looking after the expenditures of the taxpayers and then, I don't know whether, well, I guess by the fact that we're voting, if somebody else does vet them, then we're voting on those recommendations. So technically, still leave the board that's making the ultimate decisions, but I don't know that I agree with that process. But nevertheless, just whatever it turns out to be is...
Yeah, yeah, I think we would be voting, either, both the school board and the county commissioners would be voting and selecting the members. The question is, is there any value? And I think, I think part of the reason of creating this committee, when the school board discussed this, and the interim superintendent, Catty Moore, suggested it, was that it is designed to basically improve and increase trust from the public that, in terms of the oversight of school finances. And after that was in the paper the first time, I think all of us received three or four resumes from people who were interested in that, that had, you know, I mean, they were volunteering, you know, to help out, and they had a financial credentials that were, you know, pages and pages. That looked, I mean, looked like great folks, that there was a lot of interest. So I think part of this is to begin to reestablish trust in the public with basically the school financial situation. And, you know, whether it's value in having someone else, whether that, having someone else recommend candidates is a good thing or not, or whether we would do better or not, I can see Commissioner Bessie's point that at least it's providing, an independent body is making suggestions to both boards about who they're selecting. If the belief was that somebody was cozy one way or the other, this kind of removes that somewhat.
Well, who would determine the body that would do the vetting? Who would determine that? It'd have to be somebody.
Well, I think, I think it would be, I think it would be, it could be either in the policy, after talking to this IIA group, the International Institute of Auditors, if they were really, I noticed on their website, they have a link to volunteering, to volunteer and help out, so one of the volunteer jobs could be helping us, helping their community. But I think it could be in the policy, as that they were, they had agreed and the designated one, or not.
Well, who would designate, whoever these people are that would be doing the vetting, who would designate who they are?
Who's that group? Well, I think it would be up to the school board and the county commission together to do that, to just, to decide on who would do the vetting. I guess what it would be.
If I, if I may, just a little bit more explanation of what I was thinking as I was reading the specifics of the proposal. The idea, as it first was presented to the public, was as an external audit committee. My presumption, hearing that, was that they were, they were talking about a body that was independent of the school system itself, that would review ongoing financial information, presumably probably on a monthly basis, to seek, to boost, you know, two things. One is to serve as an ongoing independent watchdog, if they spot, you know, problems in the reports that they're getting, to bring that to the attention of the, of the school system, and presumably to the commission as well, in time for those to be, you know, fixed before it becomes a repeat of a problem pattern. And the other purpose related to that, that I presumed was involved, is to begin, or continue or begin, depending on your perspective, the process of rebuilding community trust in the financial management of the school system. As this proposal is written, I am not confident that it achieves either of those goals. And this is discussion by way of friendly suggestion for conversation with, with the school system. It's not really, it dropped the external from the title. It's just audit committee, and the stated purpose is to assist the Board of Education in the process of procurement of an independent audit firm to review the audit of the financial statements prior to presenting to the board, and to assist in obtaining effective correction, corrective action, and necessary improvement based on audit findings and recommendations received from the internal auditors. So this goes from the, what I thought was the concept of an ongoing review, to essentially reviewing the existing internal audits, or, you know, periodic audits, and, you know, commenting on those to the board. I'm not sure that there's a lot of bang in that, that stated purpose, in terms of benefit to the system. And the process of the membership review, again, it's in-house, as proposed in the document here. It's in-house with the school system. The Board of Education would be reviewing applications to ensure that they met the criteria specified, and- specified, and all of the reporting would be only to the, to the board itself. And the, the last reference is that the duties of this audit committee would include, perform other specific assignments at the request of the board. So it's, it's not really an independent body, and I'm not sure that it provides a lot of assistance to the school system in this form, of either, you know, providing sort of red flag alert potential, or rebuilding confidence in the public by having an external independent review process. You know, it's a suggestion that we may want to have some further discussions with the school board about what they're trying to achieve here, and the, the best ways to have a, a new committee involved in, in the process of, of seeking those goals. Again, just, you know, friendly discussion between bodies, not a, not a criticism, just a, how can we do this, that, you know, achieves those purposes.
I recommend, as a preliminary matter, that some appropriate personnel from the county staff be tasked with investigating and vetting the IIA, determine, you know, the substance of that group, before we make any commitment in that regard. I don't, I don't know who that is, or what they're doing. I want, I mean, I don't know if it's somebody playing a saxophone or what, we need to find out.
So our internal audit manager, Christopher Ong, is a member of IIA, and certainly he would be the one to speak to what they do, but he is a member of that.
Is it possible to have him come to just kind of talk to us about what that looks like?
Yes, I mean, he can talk to you about what IIA does, but we're making an assumption that the group would even want to do this, which I think is probably gonna, is a 50/50 shot, but, but yes, I mean, he can speak to what IIA does, I can ask him to do that on Thursday if the board would like.
Right, and then my last question, for anyone who knows, I did try to read that auditor's report by way of the state. Did he outline what that external committee needed to look like? Or is this something that the school boards come up with themselves?
This, this is something that's a recommendation from the interim superintendent, as something that was done at Wake County. No other county, or no other school system that we are aware of has this type of external audit committee. This was something that she recommended to the school board, just as a way of trying to build community trust and a little bit more oversight. So we certainly could also, you know, if the board would like, ask her to come and describe kind of what the intention is.
Yeah, I'm not interested.
Mr. Chairman, if, I, I took a quick look at this, a couple of things that jumped out at me is, in Section 2.7, it says that your appointment would come from the same pool as the school system had, so you wouldn't have an independent pool. Typically, we, we have our own pool of, of applicants that we choose from, so that, that's something to watch out for, if that's a concern to this board.
That's something that I've already mentioned to the interim superintendent, that she's mentioned to the board, and they are open to changing that to be part of our normal process. She mentioned that when she was here last week.
And, and my, my thinking is, the, clearly, this is an advisory committee only, has no spending authority, it has no management authority, it would not be, you know, intruding on the powers of either the school board or the, the commission. So I, I would not wish to be seen as suggesting anything that superseded the, the Board of Education's independent management authority, but something that assisted in watching out for problems and in rebuilding that community trust.
So my question is, is there any desire for us to discuss this further? And I think it would be, again, it could take several forms, subcommittee to meet with a couple of the school board members, for example, it could be, we send them a, a memorandum with suggestions of possible issues that could be considered, and I think those are two directions, or just do nothing at all, and I assume that this policy is in their queue for...
I believe their next meeting.
Which is ready to adopt.
Yeah, the policy is, it's my understanding, is currently just kind of in their public comment period, and I believe they are voting on it, because, because they've had multiple discussions on the school board's side about this. I believe it's in their next meeting, I'm trying to pull up their schedule, I think it's next Tuesday, but I am confirming.
And if that were the case, if we want to send anything, I guess we could say we've had some discussion, and, and would they consider postponing that into their next cycle? Well, and then we could perhaps make other suggestions for, for them to consider.
Well, I certainly would not be supportive of what's, what they have offered, so I would really like for them to consider our concerns and vote on it at a different date.
And perhaps the idea of, of getting the feedback from our staff member on what that organization might, might offer for possible, you know, a possible common review process for qualifications. And I would, I would be happy if, if members of our staff were, you know, to talk with the interim superintendent about the substance of some of the, some of the items we've discussed, to see what interests that there might be in possible revisions of the proposal.
There's sort of a general consensus that that would be a good sort of way to go. We could clearly, and since, I, I know that, I know our county manager needs something else on her plate, because she doesn't have anything else to do, but she does communicate with the interim superintendent pretty regularly, and perhaps she could, she might be able to ask for the delay, just in verbal conversation, and we don't need to say anything, and then tell her that we have some, just some ideas, that we, suggestions we might like to include in a, in a memorandum to them, and we would try to get that to them in a two, two-week period, say, for example, something like that, and then see if, see if that was, that may be sufficient, other than doing anything at the moment.
Yeah, and I spoke with her on Friday and told her we would be having this discussion, so I'm sure she is anticipating some feedback, so I certainly can follow up with her and see if they, if the school board would be open to delaying their decision to implement.
I mean, I, I respect the fact that they, they, we're informed, have had several discussions already, but the proposal just came to us. So we're just having our, our opportunity to, to respond to the specifics of the proposal.
Okay. And then, do we want to invite Christopher Ong on Thursday, just to give a brief overview of what IIA does, at least from the local chapter? I don't know if he's a member of the local chapter, but I know he's a member of IIA.
Sure, we could do that.
Okay, got, got it.
All righty. That was discussion item number one, and discussion item number two was to actually talk about the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School debt. And I, and I, and let me tell you why we're talking about it today. There is at least, a, there, I think it's pretty far, I'm aware that there is a, a group planning to get together of some, just private individuals, interested parties of the school system, to actually consider raising some money to help retire debt. I mean, that's kind of the general thought, to, to raise, see if there'd be enough interest, or if they would be willing to do that. And, and I, I have been directly asked, you know, for example, would we match what people were raised privately? And my answer was, I, I said, I cannot, I say this frequently, I cannot speak for the, for the commission. However, if it, in my opinion, the answer would be no, for me, and, and I said, however, I guess one thought could be, is that we might be able to, the school district owes us $5 million, we might be able to consider forgiving, dollar for dollar, some debt if additional, if private money were raised. So for example, I think, you know, I'm gonna give you a for example, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm just giving you a for example. If the goal was to try to raise 3.4 million to retire the debt to the Department of Public Construction, and they were successful, then we would forgive 3.4 million of our $5 million debt to us. I mean, that's, that's, so that, that is literally floating that for your interest in considering such a thing. And the reason I'm bringing it now is because that, the proposed dinner date for a dinner for this is October 22nd, and we will not be meeting until the 23rd after Thursday. We'll be meeting Thursday, and I would not want to, I've been asked to attend the dinner, and, and see if I, I, I don't have anything to say unless I'd like to be able to speak for the board, and not for me, in that regard, and so if we, if that were gonna happen, we would need to do something on Thursday, since they're not, it's the dinners before we have an official meeting again. I'm just interested in a little feedback, in whether you would be interested in something like that on the Thursday's agenda.
Could the CFO help me do the math? So, our debt is five point?
It is $5,026,337. That's for the school nurses and the SROs.
And what Chairman Martin is saying is that we would retire or forgive 3.4 of that?
If they raised that.
That was just an example that he gave, yes.
For an example, yes. So that would leave us with how much more in the queue?
About a million six.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can just say that I would, I would cheerfully support using the fact that they technically owe us $5 million, five point, et cetera, million dollars, as, as a way to help incentivize, you know, private donors coming together and, and helping to raise funds to pay off other elements of, of the school's debt. Now, thinking particularly in some of those interest, some of those elements that are already charging interest, like the remaining debt to the state.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, so what was the school's plan on, for, on getting that debt paid by way of the state now, before October the 22nd? Did they have a plan?
Well, certainly, I, I can't speak for the school district, but I'm sure they have no plan to retire it by October 22nd. Just October 22nd is a, is the date, the proposed date, I'll say that, because I don't think any invitation has been administered, or sent out, but the proposed date was to meet on October 22nd to discuss raising private funds. And this is a, a community-led initiative, but it would include various, you know, folks from the school district, et cetera, in that.
They have to submit, yeah, they have to submit a repayment plan to the state, I think on November 4th, or by November 4th.
And make payments by Jan, begin making some sort of payment by January.
January, okay.
An interest, yep, an interest started accruing October 1st.
Right.
So, we always look to our county manager, how does this make you feel?
Well, as the county manager, I would absolutely say we need every dollar we can get, so first and foremost, you know, certainly I don't take the fact that they owe us lightly, but I will repeat what I have told each of you who have asked me this question. The $5 million that they owe us has already created what I would say, you know, harm for us, it is, it is something that affects our fiscal year '25. We'll see that through our audit, and then impact on our fund balance for fiscal year '25. And so, the, the damage has already been done in terms of those funds, even if they repay us this fiscal year, next year, it is not going to undo the damage that it has created for fiscal year '25. However, certainly if we receive those funds back at any time, that will help to, we would put it back towards, you know, increasing our fund balance, which you've heard me talk about a lot, and certainly I would appreciate the increase in fund balance, but in terms of the damage, the damage at this point, because we did not receive it back by September 30th of 2025, the damage in essence has already been done.
Right, and one more thing, and then I'll quit here, the $5 million, five point, whatever million dollar, 5.1 million dollars, how much of that was for the sheriff's department?
I'm looking to Terry, because she has it up.
Yeah, 4.7 roughly is for the sheriff.
Was provided, SRO officers?
Yes.
For the schools to keep our children safe and secure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the other balances was for the school nurses?
$300,000 for the nurses, yes.
That was to, for healthcare, for services for our students as well?
Was there not some lease money for garage, some garage?
It was a very small amount for lease, do you have that amount?
I don't have that amount, the last I heard, they had paid that.
Okay, maybe good.
Great.
It was very, it was very small.
It was very miniscule, but great. And just, you know, kind of for public clarification, because I've also received this question, you know, those funds, the sheriff's deputies still provided those service, the school nurses still provided those service, we still paid the deputies, we still paid the nurses, and so, no service was not done, they just did not pay us back for it. I just want to clarify that for the public.
Thank you.
Just a little bit more of my thinking on this, the, you've got three levels of government that provide assistance to the local school system, you've got Congress, you've got the state legislature, and you've got us. I would have to laugh at the prospects of getting additional money from Congress for this purpose at this time. And our state legislative delegation, at least the leadership of the state legislative delegation, has made it clear that, that they see any cash, you know, money, to pay directly to, to other vendors, or to themselves, for the, the money owed, to be a non-starter. The only idea that has come back to us from that level yet is the idea of the state legislature loaning the county the money with interest accruing, so that we could provide additional money to the school system. There's nothing else on the table right now, except whatever is available from other community sources. So if we can use a, a part of a debt that it doesn't look like there's any realistic near-term prospect for the school system to have any source to pay us back, and in the first place, to help raise community funds to, to knock out other parts of the debt, it's a win-win, as a practical matter, all around.
I just want to add that I think it is absolutely the right thing to do, to talk to citizens who's interested in helping the school system, and I think just by way of the chair going to have conversation in regards to what the possibility could be with, working with, obviously, at this point, the, the county, to consider some creative ways to move our school district forward. I, I think that this community doesn't take lightly where we are with the school district, because the school district is the pillar of every community in this country, and when the public school systems start to fail in any way, we should be very concerned, so I applaud the citizens who want to get together to say, hey, we are in this with you all. And I think that to not go and have something reasonably, you know, proactive to say about where we are as a county, and what the possibilities are, I think you can't promise to vote, because until we all vote, you just don't know what's going to happen. But I think that, I hope that there is at least general interest by this board to send the chair to a meeting, to talk about what that looks like, what, what realistically, you know, what we... you know, what we could do to partner with the community to try to relieve some of this debt. I have spoken to the county manager about working with the chamber to look at an economic impact analysis. Because I do think by way of the school district being the third largest employer and 200 people have been let go and possibly another 70 to 80, citizens are very concerned about the devastation of what's going on with our school system. And so I think that isn't, I don't want to take this too far, but I do recall in 2008, 2009, there was this thought, well, they're just too big to fill. And as citizens across this country, we had to bail out the bank so that we could survive as a nation. And I think that maybe not exactly the same, but it is a very serious issue in our community, what's going on with our school district. And I appreciate the citizens, again, wanting to do what they can privately to assist us.
And just as a follow-up, Commissioner Woodbury, I have reached out to, or actually, Mark Owens and I have been kind of texting back and forth, trying to establish a date. But certainly, there's no secret, I mean, there is concern about the potential economic development impact that this situation may have on our community. And so we will see if there's, you know, such a thing as getting an economic impact right now. I think I told you, it may be too soon, but certainly I think that is something to be potentially concerned about.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that I very much appreciate the community getting involved. But I do believe that we know more than those community leaders do about what the, the citizens are going through and how desperate the citizens are and how disappointed they are in the school system. And you know, there's 82.1% of the folks in this county do not have kids in the school system. And our tax office is receiving phone calls wanting to know how much of my tax bill goes to the school system. And I do not want that percentage of my tax dollars going to the school system. And I don't think the tax office has ever had calls like that before. And this $5 million to say, well, it happened in '25, is still $5 million that the school citizens owe the citizens, the taxpayer citizens of Forsyth County. And although I appreciate these community members, I wish they would not tie us to their fundraising. I hope, I wish them good luck and I hope they raise $5 million. And if there's citizens out there who want to contribute to this debt, let them volunteer to do it. Let's not mandate that our citizens do it. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I swears, give my opinion, get it over with. Or get my opinion over with. First, I'm not going to tell you whether you should go to that meeting you're talking about or not. If you want to go, that is fine with me. If you do not want to go, that is fine with me. So that part is settled. And those people that have the money to give, and I would expect the ones that may be talking about this and seeing if something can be done are people that's got some excess funding or money. And that is, that's good that they're given a situation thought. I wished everybody had, all of the citizens had a copy of the audit report that the state auditor sent it, sent us. And if everybody or who all wanted to read it could, that'd be fine. They'd have, they'd be a different view than what I believe is out there now. I can't change everybody's view, not going to try to, because if, if my view gets set on something, there's not very much changing of it. And after reading that, that gave me a, just gave me a different view on the situation. And this about the part about what the school owes the county, that the money was, we didn't give them all of that, that one, they just, the appropriation, the appropriation with the SRO officers, that, that money, whether it was all, it wasn't appropriated, that the $5 million wouldn't appropriate it all at one time, it was appropriated, but it wouldn't, was it expended to them, passed to them?
Yes, so we send them their allocation on a monthly basis. And so we gave them those dollars monthly. So it wasn't $5 million at one time, it was part of their monthly allocation. In May, we gave them two months at a time, we allocated to them, May and June. And so typically what happens is when we, we give them the funds for school resource officers, nurses, and a couple other things, and then we invoice them for them to essentially pay us back for the service. And what they did not do last year for the first time was actually pay us back.
Okay. That's cleared up. And so the, different words has been used for what has happened about the spending of the money. And it seems like to me that the word that most could come up with was misspent. And that sounds somewhat smoother than what it really was. State auditors, they got it in a report, what it really was. But misspent, it's, that's not a light word. You've just taken money that was put aside for a purpose and spent on something else. So we were giving them on a monthly basis the money to pay for, as you say, Ms. McDaniel, to keep the students safe. That's what I said about two months ago. But they were, somebody was taking that money and they were spending it on something else. And this seems to be a little bit worse to me because it should have been used for safety, but it's been on something else. But the county keeps, keeps on paying the personnel for the sheriff's department. So where we stand right now on all of that is taxpayers has already paid for that two times, as I see it. We paid the, the schools or give the schools that money, the $5 million, so not quite five, if some of it was for the health department. And they weren't paying us back and they couldn't, they would spend it, well, they were just spending it on whatever they, well, such it all in the audit. And then we, the county, had to keep on paying the sheriff's personnel. Had it not been, if we didn't do that, then there would have been no officers there. And I give that, all of this a lot of thought. And I just don't believe that I'm going to be willing to do that. It's, there's still some, it's right many things, but it's, some things, it's just, I can't understand why it's not being said by anyone. Some, I hear a little of it out there from taxpayers, but all of the people in the government agencies are not saying that, not anything much more than misspent. Nobody's used it other than the state auditor, they did. Malfeasance, the word they used, and all the reason they use, that is lighter than criminal malfeasances. The reason they couldn't find that because, or didn't classify it as that, is because they couldn't find where anybody took any money for their own personal use. Either one of our attorneys on the malfeasance and criminal malfeasance have described that about as it should be, what, or what the meaning of it is, not what you think about what I'm saying. Or if you disagree with it. I guess that's a good place for me to stop.
Ms. Chair, I had a related question for the county manager. We made a change not long back, right? In the way the, and this was at the suggestion of the interim superintendent speaking for the school district. So for, at least for this year, going forward, what we're doing is we're paying the funding that was approved as part of the budget for the schools directly to the sheriff's department and to the health department, basically.
Correct. So we are no longer, for fiscal year '26, we are no longer sending those funds to the schools for them to just send right back to us. We are, we're just withholding those funds and paying, well, we've always paid our folks directly, but we're withholding those funds to just not have them send them right back to us.
So we, essentially, we, on a cooperative basis with the, with the school district, we've come up to, and applied a way to avoid the, the back and forth and guarantee that the, the money that, that we appropriated for the purposes is spent directly for those purposes. So the, the, the bleeding has stopped.
Yes.
On that, it's not, we're not going to be dealing with that again this year.
But the $5 million did not stop. It is still owed.
Yes. So I would, I would concur, that's a real debt. That's real debt. So this is not, we're not talking about a gimmick. We're talking about a potential decision to basically conclude that, that this is an uncollectible debt in all practical purposes. And we're going to use that, part of that as an incentive for members of the, you know, private members of the community who have the capability to raise funds on a millions level to do so. I still think that's a good investment. I think it's a good investment for the, the children in schools. I think it's a good investment for the taxpayers. I think it's a good investment for the community. Because the only way we will, we're likely to ever get that money back is by demanding additional cuts in, in instruction and personnel of the school system. And I don't think that a majority of the community would approve of that as the alternative. So I see this as an eternal, as an alternative to that process.
Well, Commissioner Bessie, I think that it could be paid back in five years and we could hold a certain percentage out of their allocation for five years to pay it back. I'd rather, I'd rather give them five years to pay it back than to forgive it. And this board has already given them 8.3 million. So I don't, I don't know what they expect from, from the taxpayers. It's asking too much.
I would just like to add that, you know, generally, I disagree with the vice chair on this issue. I was sitting here thinking that if there is not a majority for, to me, the ideal, which is to forgive at least the amount of 3.2 millions so that they could move forward with at least paying the state based on the match from the citizens, would there be a majority on this board to not forgive but delay to a point where they, the school district could come back reasonably without hard effect? And so what I mean by that, if it takes longer than that, five years, because otherwise they could, you know, personnel could be affected, maybe it's seven years. I don't know what that timeline is. We, I guess, have to talk with the superintendent to kind of see reasonably what time do they need in order to pay the county back if there isn't a majority to forgive that 3-point-odd something million dollars. Hopefully, there is, you know, the, the majority there. But I do, I would support a Plan B just to move this thing along so that the school district doesn't continue to be national news and more and more businesses and families not wanting to come to Forsyth County because of the fear of this is not a good place to raise a family due to our school district.
I would say for discussion, I'm not convinced that there isn't a majority on the board for the proposal. I suspect that there may be. And I absolutely respect the judgment of my, my colleagues, Commissioner Weston and Commissioner Linville on this. But I think as a practical matter, this is the least damaging way to, to address part of that outstanding debt. And in fact, is not going to increase the tax rate, an iota, because that money was already spent. We have already adjusted the tax rate to include this year an increased allocation to, to the school system. Defensible, I believe, and a majority of the board, I think, came to this conclusion in the budget vote, defensible based on benefit to the community. We are not saying that we would increase the tax rate in the future by any amount to, to finance this proposed incentive.
I haven't heard anybody say we would. We do need that $5 million in our fund balance, though. If we can remember the discussions we had through this entire past budget year, our fund balance is not where it needs to be. And I'm thinking more of the county's financial situation right now than I am the school situation, because I don't think that we should be dragged down into this problem by, by hindering our fund balance that could cause us to lose our AAA bond rating.
And I concur that that is a reasonable concern. What I understand, our county manager to have told us this morning, what we've already been told individually in private discussions, was that the, the hit to our rating potential has already taken place. And that, that is not something that we can avoid at this point. The theoretical value of saying that we might get this $5 million back at some point in the next five or 10 or 15 years, I don't think is worth the, the impact of having the interest rate continue to pile up on the state debt and on the debt to the nutrition fund and, you know, on the debt of whatever other judgments may be abroad against, against the school system based on unpaid invoices. I think that we're doing a good deal for the taxpayers in reality, as well as for the, the, the school system with this proposal. And I would, again, say that I am endorsing having our chair able to go to this discussion saying that, that he believes that the, that the votes are there to do this if, if, if the, the private believes that the, that the votes are there to do this if, if the private sources raise, raise the funds.
So, question for the board. Would the board like us to prepare a resolution for Thursday to be voted on to essentially recap this discussion? Obviously, it can be voted up or down, but would you like a resolution, or are you just taking a straw poll?
Well, I think, I think, I've heard pros and cons here. I think there's a mix, there's mixed feelings. I think probably we need some time, everybody needs time probably to think about it and pray about it. But I think on Thursday, we ought to be able to vote one way or the other, up or down, to do it. Because at least my preference is going, if I'm going to go, I want to say what we've done. I want to say, we're not going to, we're not going to help out at all, or we will, we can match what you do in forgiving loans. I just want to say what the will of the commission is. That's all I want to do. And that's why I brought it up in this matter of this timeframe. So, that's good. We can vote it up or down.
Yep. So staff will work on a draft resolution, will float it individually just to make sure it kind of encompasses what you're looking for, and we'll have a draft for you soon. I'll work with the attorney on it.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for actually a healthy discussion, and we'll stand adjourned.